Okay. Thank you all for joining us tonight. It's Monday, September 13th, 2021, and it's time for our regularly scheduled city council meeting. I'll support to certify the meeting notice.
This meeting has been noticed in accordance with Idaho Code 74-204.
Call roll please.
Councilmember Beaumont.
Mayor.
Councilmember Jorgensen.
Here.
Councilmember Page.
Here.
Thank you. Item C is the Pledge of Allegiance, if you join me.
Pledge of Allegiance to the Pride of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Next item is changes to the agenda. And from staff, okay. Move down to item E. Which is the consent agenda. For those in the audience, these are standard items that we approve in a block. Council has the ability to pull any of those off if they want to. Council, the consent agenda is before you.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
I move to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
Got a motion and a second to approve the consent agendas. Are there any discussion? Hearing none on the clerk call roll.
Councilmember Beaumont.
Here.
Councilmember Jorgensen.
Yes.
Councilmember Page.
Yes.
Thank you. We'll move down to special business. First order of business is a Constitution Week proclamation. I'll read the proclamation into the record. Whereas the Constitution of the United States of America, the guardian of our liberties embodies the principles of limited government in a republic dedicated to the rule by law. And whereas September 17, 2021 marks the 200th and 34th anniversary of the framing of the Constitution of the United States of America by the Constitutional Convention. And whereas it is fitting and proper to accord official recognition to this magnificent document and its memorable anniversary and to the patriotic celebrations which will commemorate it. And whereas Public Law 915 guarantees the issuing of a proclamation each year by the President of the United States of America, designating September 17 through 23 as Constitution Week. Now therefore, I, John G. Evans, by virtue of the authority vested in me as mayor of the city of Garden City, do hereby proclaim the week of September 17 through 23, 2021, as Constitution Week. And ask our citizens to reaffirm the ideals the framers of the Constitution had in 1787 by vigilantly protecting the freedoms guaranteed to us through this guardian of our liberties. Dated this 13th day of September, 2021, John Evans. Next item on the agenda, item F2. This is a public hearing. The hearing, the city will take public comment on the design standards for small wireless facilities. Let me see if someone is. Yes, G1, Colin, anybody signed up for this? Is there anyone here to speak to the cell 5G cell tower issue? Well, to comply with our agenda, I will go ahead and open the public hearing. To take public comment on design standards for small wireless facilities. And ask if anyone is here to testify on that, that topic.
Mr. Mayor, disappointed order. There is, I have a short presentation as does AT&amp;T and Verizon.
Okay.
I do not know if you want that presentation now or when we pass the public hearing down to the resolution stage.
Well, what I think I'll do, we, are we going to get our video feedback?
He's working on it.
Okay. We're going to just take a couple minute recess here so we can get our video feedback.
It's just the screen in here. We can't see. Everything else is still functioning.
Oh, okay. So the people virtually can see us.
Correct.
All right. Okay. My interest was knowing if there's anyone online that plans to testify. Charlie, do you want to give your presentation first?
Yeah, me too, but I'm waiting on the overhead.
Okay, all right. We'll just wait a minute then.
Just minimize this. Okay. You help me share screen. Thank you, Mayor, members of the council. We're here tonight. We've been talking about small wireless facilities. Specifically, specifically, we've been talking about a code amendment to deal with this newer technology. We've been talking about drafting a template for a master license agreement. And that's been going back and forth. I've been working with the industry, specifically AT&amp;T and Verizon. We come up with something that not only the city, but the public and the industry can all get along hopefully with. So tonight, though, we're talking specifically about design standards. And as my memo on design standards starts on page 60 of your packet. And I have several exhibits. And so the way I see this going down this evening is I'm just going to show a couple different design review standards. And then Ms. Thornborough from Development Services will present what the recommendations were from the Parks and Waterway Committee, or the recommending bodies. And then like to hear the council's comments or if the council's ready to go forward with design review. Or approving design review standards. And if the council is ready, we have a drafted resolution for that. I think Liz Walker, she represents, she's an attorney, she represents AT&amp;T. I think she's on the Zoom. I don't, I mean, I'm assuming she's on the Zoom. I haven't seen it with my own eyes. And I also think Representative, maybe Mr. Cox from Verizon are on there. And just talk about design standards. The city set this for a public hearing because I can tell, I can represent that members of the public have contacted mayor's office, have contacted my office in the past with concerns about the technology, with concerns about what the design standards should look like, you know, how many should they, how tall should they be? Should they be in residential? I mean, they're at some point in time, they're going to have to be in residential areas. I think initially the industry will tell you that they're primarily concerned with right of way. And so primary, a lot of times it's going to be ACHD right of way. But that's not to say that at some point in time in the future that they are going to be applying to put these small wireless facilities, we call them. And small wireless facilities work for 5G. They also work for 4G. But for them to be able to provide the 5G, these small wireless facilities have to be around in the city. And Boise City has already implemented and passed what their design standards are, I think, to some extent. Although I heard today that they're looking at their design standards again. And so in your packet, you'll see some examples, some illustrations of design standards. And, and so I'll just summarize those. Also, ACHD, because a lot of these things are going to be in ACHD right of way. They've already covered design review standards to some extent in their master license agreement with the industry. So going through the memorandum, the first example is from Draper City. And it's up on the screen for the people that are on Zoom. And there's really, just for the people that are listening, there's really three different kinds of these small wireless facilities. There's one, they're standalone poles. There, there are some that go on the streetlights. And then there's some that go on the city lights or the Idaho power lights, as the case may be. So there's really three different standards. The industry, it's been kind of an educational process for me. What I've been informed and what I believe to be true is that the standards are different across the country. The standards are a little bit different in the Northwest compared to the Southeast. And that's different compared to the middle of the country. And the industry could explain why. I don't exactly know why, but there are different standards for different geographic locations in the country. What I'm being told is that Draper City, this is in the Northwest. This is standalone pole. It's Exhibit A in my material. It's in the council packet on page 64. This is a, this is a standalone pole. And I believe both AT&amp;T and Verizon will tell you that's standard. I think you're going to see some of these up in Boise right now. I think you're going to see some of these in, or something very similar to it in Meridian, and the ACHD is right of way. And so this is one example of a standalone pole. Exhibit B is what they call a, well, this is the, obviously the one on the streetlight. Again, my memo talks about, a little bit about the technology. All of them have some basic components. Fiber has to go to all of them. Either the fiber is already laid or, you know, the industry is going to have to lay the fiber. And then, and then the antenna is on the top. So this is a small wireless facility, 5G pole with a streetlight on it. And again, this is from Draper City. And here's one from Draper City that are on the streetlight. So here's the existing streetlight and what they do. And here's the specific measurements. If we wanted to get technical tonight and talk about specific measurements, I'd be happy to go there, the council so chooses. But it gets into specifics, exactly what can be allowed and what cannot be allowed in Draper City. Here's an example, again, very specific from Denver. It gets into, you know, and this is one on a streetlight. They call it a cantina, I think. And it gets really specific. And so this is what they have in Denver. I haven't heard of any major problems in Denver. So that's Exhibit B. And then this, this is the ACHD master license agreement. And so what ACHD does is worth noting, I think, is that they have different aesthetic standards between, you know, compared to what part of their jurisdiction there is. There's different standards between a transportation facility compared to an existing third party owned pole compared to a new pole. They also limit how many can be in a residential area. So these are all things that the council, I would respectfully suggest need to start thinking about. If not tonight, then soon. How tall do you want them to be? I think the industry would say they're best at 40 feet. Some jurisdictions say no 35 feet. Some jurisdictions say they can be taller in a commercial, but in a residential, they can't be that tall. What I've learned is that if you have a height restriction, like 30 feet or 35 feet, and again, I think the industry's on the Zoom if I get this wrong. But the shorter they are, the more you need them because it's line of sight. It's things like that. So the taller they are, the less they're going to be, the shorter they are, the more they're going to be. And again, I probably oversimplified that like I usually do. But you know, there's this, I think ACHD's MLA is pretty solid. And we could do that. I do, I would suggest that if the council wants to regulate design standards, which is within the purview of any municipality or a county or so on and so forth. That you do it in a standalone agreement or a standalone standards, like a book and pass it by resolution. I would suggest you don't put it in the MLA because it's going to be for 10, 15, 20 years and the technology changes. I would, and I would suggest it not be in the ordinance. So if there's a change in the tech, technology, we don't have to go back and then the ordinance. I would suggest that that be in a separate document. So my memo goes through, you know, we can, the ACHD MLA is. I've talked to a consultant. He said that these MLA should be at least 20, but not less, not more than 50 pages of length. And this is pretty thorough. Whoever drafted this did a good job. But then we get into AT&amp;T has provided some other examples. And so Exhibit D is another example of a standalone pole that they provided. Exhibit E is a Valmont external mount. And it's, it's more of a silver color instead of a black color. Exhibit F is another example of what they call a Valmont external mount. And then, well, then I got them small all of a sudden. Whatever happened. It's, I don't know how I got tiny, Allison. So in the packet, you know, there's various examples. I did hear from, here's a wood mount, for example. I did hear from Liz Walker this afternoon, and I think she maybe will want to comment. But if the council's ready to start talking specifics, and that's within the council's purview. Then what she is suggesting is more specific criteria. And she references South Jordan City. And while this is not near packet, it did not make it into the packet. It has very specific written design standards. And it gets into this, it gets right into it. And so I think it's all within the council's discretion. I mean, perhaps the council does not want to regulate design standards. That's within your discretion. You could regulate them. You cannot regulate them. If you want to regulate them, it could just be a little bit of regulation or it could be really specific, like what South Jordan has done. It's all within the council's discretion. Comments from the public are that perhaps these are not safe. The FCC says, and this is something that I think is important, the FCC says they're completely safe based on their studies. And they have studies to back it up. Another thing that's important to talk to constituents about is if the constituency say they're not safe. It's out of, it's out of the city's wheelhouse on whether they're coming in or coming out. The city is preempted by the federal government and the FCC. We cannot say they're not coming in. It's straight up preempted. And so the FCC regulates these things. The FCC says they're safe. And really what this local jurisdictions can do is regulate what they look like within reasonable standards. So with that, I think that summarizes my memo and the exhibits. Like I said, I think Ms. Thornborough will tell you what the recommending bodies have suggested. And I think the industry is also on the line. So with that, I'll stand for any questions. Thank you.
Any questions, Mr. Waddams?
Yes, Mr. Waddams, and maybe Ms. Thornborough will be adding, but is there any information about this handout that was left?
Yeah.
Okay. Mr. Waddams, I want to make sure I understand. You're recommending that this not be handled in ordinance, but handled as an MLA.
For design standards, I recommended that just the design standards are a separate standalone book that's been passed by resolution. So it would be called like the design standards or aesthetic standards regarding city. And it would be a booklet that's passed by the council. Or at least the standards that are passed by the council, then we could put it in the booklet for the mayor to authorize. There's a lot of different ways to go about it. In each jurisdiction that I heard you do it a little bit different. And I think Liz Walker, who is, I think she's on the phone. She's been really great. I can tell, I can just represent. Both AT&amp;T and Verizon have been great to work with. Whenever I ask a question, they're responsive. I think they're both on the phone now. For obvious reasons, they know a lot more about it than I do. So I'm looking at it from a 50 foot level and they can give you a real better level, a better explanation on this technical stuff.
Okay. Anything else for Mr. Waddams?
Okay. Hand it over to Ms. Thornborough, that I would suggest we hand it over to the industry.
Okay.
And thank you, Mr. Waddams, Mayor Evans, and members of the council. The, the items I'll be talking about are actually not a part of the, the standard packet link. There's a separate link online. And what I've handed out, this image, and it's now up being shared as well. And is an image that was linked to the correspondence between myself and Mr. Waddams that, for whatever reason, didn't follow through as it got into the packet. And so that's just what that image is that wasn't showing. And staff did meet with the Garden City Design Review Committee as well as the Parks and Waterways Committee in July. And provided them with a number of different design standards. As well as just visual pictures of both streetlights, different ways that small cells have been handled. And just a variety of different things to start teasing out what their recommendations would be. To summarize what their recommendations are, I believe that you received a memorandum that's also in that secondary link. July 28th is the date of it. And it goes through line by line summarizing what both of those appointed boards did recommend. But in that, just kind of to, to give a high overview. Their, their recommendations came before I had a conversation with Ms. Liz Walker, with AT&amp;T and the legal interns that came subsequent. But the Design Review Committee had indicated that they would prefer to see the small cells integrated first into buildings and architecture. And then perhaps in art and then move to the public right of way in forms of standalone poles or streetlights. In discussions with Ms. Walker, that's, that's not an option that's desirable for the industry. They're hoping that the standards can be in public right of way, not on private property or in public spaces. And of course, the industry can correct me if I'm incorrect in that. And secondarily, the, the art images that were shown to the committees are not exactly small cells. They're a larger type of, of product. And also whatever standards that the city enacts have to be predetermined. So saying that an art piece is something that's desirable is very difficult because you'd have to describe exactly what that art piece would look like. It might be worth noting that ACHD standards was one of the standards that they looked at. And, and those standards include a 35 foot spacing requirement. Both committees had indicated that they prefer to see something that's larger. It's my understanding from discussions with Ms. Walker that as long as the spacing's reasonable. You could certainly go much further apart, say 200 feet. Might be something that would be reasonable. There was a question what co-location would look like. Again, from conversations, that might be very difficult. And so it's not desirable to look at co-location from what I understand from the industry standards. Again, the industry has a chance to speak. And if I'm misrepresenting anything, certainly I hope they'll, they'll make those amendments for me. Both of the committees recommended some sort of hierarchy. So a hierarchy perhaps on arterial roads, collector roads and local roads. With the arterials being favorable to put the, the, the small cells or commercial in nature and residential in nature. Apparently that is okay as long as there's a relief valve. One of the reasons that there would need to be a relief valve, for example, is ITD has about another year before their standards will be set. And so if Garden City says only on arterial roads, the industry wouldn't be able to place their, their product on really any, any place in Garden City because of the way that the state and ACHD are set up. Having a design that incorporates streetlights is certainly desirable from the committees. As well as having apparatuses that flags and flower baskets and whatnot could be incorporated. And including down shielded lights. And the reason down shielded is because Garden City code actually requires down shielded lights. And so it's following with code standards. And, and then this is an image where Design Review Committee, some of the, the polls and the images that were looked at have a pretty good, or a pretty big massing. And that's actually something that's recommended against, not the massing itself. But understanding that the industry recommends not having flat surfaces because people place garbage on them. But the, the Design Review Committee in particular was really concerned about that massing and how it would feel interacting with it. And this image is something, and taking all of their communications with the Parks and Waterways, with the design review. And what could work based on the industry standards, I think this poll might be something that's approximating what a recommendation between the two boards might look like. So you have the, it's a light with decorative arm with a down cast, probably LED luminaire with not overly tall pole and a pole that doesn't have a large massing. And there are other recommendations such as no street trees should be removed as a result of the addition of a small cell. And with that, I think I've gone through in general the recommendations. And I stand for any questions.
Questions?
Yes, I have a question. When you're referencing colo, are you referencing two different providers co-locating?
Account, or Mayor Councilmember Jorgensen, that's correct.
Any other questions? Okay, let's open the public hearing and take a comment on the design standards. And as part of this public hearing, we'll start off with our industry providers. Why don't we start with Ms. Walker? Welcome.
Hello. Thank you, council. And thank you for letting us be here tonight to weigh in on the hard work that Mr. Waddams and Ms. Thornborough and staff has done. We really appreciated the opportunity to be included in this process. And, and work with the city to try to come up with workable design guidelines. I don't, I don't have a lot to add because Mr. Waddams and Ms. Thornborough really, really covered the major points. I guess the, the only thing I would add is that I think that the, the design examples that Mr. Waddams presented were representative of what we've been doing in other places and that have been workable. The Denver, the Denver pole that he showed and the Draper pole. And the reason that they're workable is that they provide necessary room to accommodate the basic components that every, every pole has, which is the radio equipment, a meter and an antenna. And so, and then some of the dual use poles will also have a light pole. And so that's why they, they have to be configured in a certain way. You know, so that they can accommodate those, those elements. And I do agree with Mr. Waddams as far as having a standalone document for design standards. That's what many of the other jurisdictions have done. And what it does is provide flexibility so that the city can adapt any changes in technology that might be needed with design. So the standalone document, like I said, gives staff flexibility to amend those without having a significant process associated with changing the design standards to meet maybe new technology or new changing technology. So I think that that was a really good idea that he mentioned. And then Ms. Thornborough also mentioned just the idea that the design standards should be available in advance. And that's, that's a requirement under law that, that the design standards have to be provided in advance. But the reason for that is because the carriers want to be able to come in and design their network for your city to meet the communication needs of the constituents and the residents of the city and visitors to the city. And they want to be able to do that in a, in a comprehensive way that also is more efficient for the city representatives. So if you have a set design that the carriers know is what we need to do, then we come in with that design and then it creates an efficiency. It's more efficient for your, your city representatives to review those applications and determine, yes, this meets the criteria or no, it doesn't. Where if you get into more of a discretionary process, you might end up with different standards depending on who's reviewing it. Or, you know, if somebody leaves the city, then, and a new person comes in, they might have a different standard on, on, or a different opinion on what's, you know, how something should look in terms of an art installation or a building installation. So these are meant to be a repeatable, scalable design that provides for an efficient process for permitting. And Ms. Thornborough mentioned that relief valve. And that's a helpful thing to provide flexibility. So, you know, the goal is to provide a network that works for your city. And every city is different. So it should be, there should be a relief valve so that the carriers can design to meet a certain need in a certain area. So that, I, I thought the design examples were very helpful that Mr. Waddam shared in terms of the, with the equipment in the base, the meter in the base. And then the antenna at top. And they are, those are workable. And they are, those are workable designs and they look nice and they function well. So I think, you know, beyond that, that that provides the carrier with a workable design. And I I I look forward to hearing what Verizon has to say, but I think they would agree with me that 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 design works. So that's all I have to add. If there were any questions that you needed me to answer on behalf of AT&amp;T, I'd be happy to do that. Thank you.
Okay, questions, Council?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Thank you, Ms. Walker, for your time. I did have a question. Did you get a chance to see the sample that Ms. Thornborough showed? Kind of a down shielded light, possibly a LED luminaire with like more of a fluted or complicated pole. Is that a design that's workable from your perspective?
Yeah, from what I can tell, it's hard to tell the scale from the photo. So there's a dimension that's required depending on, you know, what kind of antenna you're putting at the top. It looked pretty small in the photo. But again, if there's flexibility with how how the antenna, you know, the size of the antenna at the top, the basic design looked workable. And then it looked like there was equipment and equipment space at the base. And again, as far as the specific dimensions, I can't, I can't tell. You know, it would have to be a specific size to fit the equipment in the base. The other thing that is important to think about is the meter being in the base. And that makes the base larger because you have to fit the meter in to it. And then, but I, you know, and I I just couldn't tell from the picture in terms of the specific dimensions. The other thing that is worth having an engineer, both carriers engineers look at is the possibility of the light standard and where that's attached in relation to the antenna. Because that can sometimes cause a type of interference called PIM. And it's a and and that has to do with metal being near the antenna and somehow, you know, it can sometimes hinder the signal from the antenna. So that has to be kind of carefully worked out with the help of an engineer to say, you know, it has to be so far from the antenna or, you know, above or below it. So those were my own would be mentally concerns about that design.
Great, thanks. Any other questions? Great, let's move to Mr. Cox. I think I see him on.
Yes, I am here. I apologize for not having a video. Video capability is down at the moment. I want to say thank you, Mayor City Council, for giving us the time to be able to talk. And Mr. Waddam did a great job in covering the industry standards and the direction that we're heading. And Ms. Walker did a great job also, so I don't have a whole lot to add. In fact, but I do want to say that in in this particular instance, even though we're as competitors, we do work well together in working with the cities on these standards and and making sure that they meet not only the industry's needs, but also the city needs. And in fact, Draper City is here in Utah. We worked closely with both Draper City and with the other carriers, including AT&amp;T, to make sure that that standard met both the needs of the city as well as the industry. I do want to echo the importance of the height. I I I realize that that becomes a very big concern within the city when we start talking about the height. Obviously, there are height requirements set by the FCC as far as maximum goes. But when you start to look at the minimum heights, the you, as as Mr. Waddam said, it does mean that we need more poles to or more standalone poles or or co-located poles to. And when I'm saying co-located, that would be on a a a city owned asset such as a a light standard or something like that. There would need to be more to cover the same area. So when you try to balance out the number of poles that will need to be deployed within a given area versus the height, that's the balance that we try to strike and with the the city and 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 with the constituents and the industry to try to balance that out. And the standards do help with that a great deal. Obviously, you saw most of them around that 40 foot height. That's that kind, that's what we consider to be the the sweet spot in that it's not too tall to where it really impacts aesthetics. But at the same time, it's tall enough to be able to propagate the RF signal the way that it should be. I also want to echo that standalone doc is a great idea. We've been working that with several cities. It makes it a lot easier to update those those standards when necessary. One thing I did want to talk about too, in Ms. Thornborough's presentation, she spoke about the the private versus the right of way as far as the hierarchy goes. As although we, there are instances where we do deploy on public buildings and that as well. The right of way is is where we are looking to deploy, given also the requirement by the FCC and the non-prohibition as far as 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 not being able to deploy within that. So I just want to caution that as far as putting a private building over the right of way, there are some prohibitions in place that would make that difficult. So we do try to work with the city to make sure that those deployments in the right of way, as I said before, do meet the need of the city as well as the industry and and also are aesthetically pleasing to the constituents. We do our best to make them look as 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 a non-obtrusive as possible. I do want to address co-location really quick as far as when you're talking about putting more than one carrier on one pole. Although there may be technical ability to do so, it does make those poles that we have 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 looked at in the past un-aesthetically pleasing there. They end up being very large, especially trying to put all the equipment that's necessary for the different carriers and trying to minimize the amount of heat that is created and damaging the equipment within the base. And if you don't put it in the base, and there has to be multiple boxes or structures or what they call H-frames around the structure to put the radio equipment, the meters and such. So we have recommended that those type of structures that are co-locating multiple carriers into single structures be avoided just because, like I said, the aesthetics and the 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 technical ability for that gets, it's very, very complicated. Also, one last thing I want to come mention was the restricting, we we've had, we have had several standards which have done been more restrictive in the residential areas. And it's been interesting lately that we've seen several of those cities now coming back and doing text amendments to allow for more than what they had originally intended in the residential areas. Just because they they have constituents that are now asking for coverage and not able to get it. I have several examples where cities have have made it so that either we, the industry has not been able to build in residential or very, very limited. And like I said, we're now seeing some reversal of that being done in text amendment. So all I'm asking is that the Council does consider the balance of that as well, that this is intended, as Ms. Walker said, to be able to reach our customers, your constituents, and be able to give them the RF that signal that's necessary in order to make this work appropriately. Those are really all the comments that I have. I now stand for any questions that there may be.
Questions? Hey, I think we're covered on that. Thank you both. If you can stay on the line a few minutes in case we get a question from our online participants, that we may need some assistance in answering. So with that, if you are joining us virtually and have a comment to make regarding this item, you would use the raise your hand function and our clerk will recognize it and will take your testimony. Okay, nothing Lisa?
No.
Okay, let the record reflect that we got, we didn't receive any on virtual interest in testifying on this item. Council, we've got some more to talk about on this. I think I will, in deference to those that are here on other issues, we'll pick that up when we get to item six later on in the packet when you, when you, item G six, we can continue the discussion there. Is that all right with everybody? Okay. Item F three is ARPA funding options presentation. This is the federal money that the city's been, oh, did we get somebody?
We did, Mr. Mayor.
Oh, I'm sorry.
For the small wireless.
No.
No.
Mayor Evans, that the one that you received there is for the the next public hearing that's on the agenda?
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. Okay.
It's meant to be item G one.
It's meant to be item G one. Okay, that's myself. Okay. Okay. Over a two-year period, the city's receiving a little over $2 million of ARPA money, American Recovery Act money. And it's restricted into how we spend it. Council, you had a memo that indicated a list of public works projects which are authorized expenditures under this. Lisa did a memo on that that I'm sure you've all read. For the benefit of the audience, we are at least at this point recommending most of this money be used for sewer and water upgrades. That benefits every property owner, every rate payer in the city because it's a cost avoidance strategy that allows us to make improvements now that otherwise we would have to include in our rate structure to make later at likely a higher cost. So we have a list of projects. I've also, since the memo went out, I've had a discussion with the governor's office about some potential other opportunities specific in our circumstance that would allow some enhancements to our conversion green belt plan, converting asphalt to concrete for long-term maintenance. That may be ineligible project as well. We're going to kind of sort that out. But I was encouraged by the governor's office to take a hard look at that as well if we if we chose to do that. We've got a pretty full agenda. Council, with your permission, I just soon not spend a lot of time on this right now so we can get those that are waiting on some other items. Can I keep this on the agenda for two weeks and we'll bring it up? Does that be all right with everybody?
Yes.
Okay. So you'll be ready early. All right.
Thank you, Mayor.
Right. Let's move on to item G one. This is a public hearing on PUD FY2021-0001. Who's who's here representing the applicant? On, you are, sir? Yes, okay, thank you. This is a public hearing, Council. Let me go through just briefly a couple of items. Does anyone on the council have a conflict of interest regarding this item?
No.
No.
Okay. All right, with that, we'll let the applicant present the application. Staff will present the findings from the city and then we'll open the public hearing. So welcome, sir, if you would, give us your name and address for the record. Point that microphone up because you're a little talking in the mic. There we go. Thank you, sir.
Good evening. Jeff Hatch with Hatch Design Architecture. Our address is 200 West 36th Street in the lovely city of Garden City, Idaho.
Welcome, Mr. Hatch. Now, you can
Thank you.
Just speak up, it'll
Evening, Mayor Evans and council members. Thank you for your consideration of our planned unit development this evening. Location of our proposed planned unit development is on the northwest corner of Clay and 33rd Street. And so we originally had one parcel of land and did a neighborhood meeting. And the feedback we got from the neighbors was that they liked the concept, but we should probably find more land. And so the the property owner went out and discussed with the owners to the south of the parcel and were able to acquire additional parcels to do another neighborhood meeting, additional adjustments to the site. But we felt that it was prudent to the neighborhood to to try to develop something that, you know, apply that feedback to the neighbors. The orientation of this site plan is is rotated. So so North Clay is on the right-hand side and 33rd is on the the south. 33rd is part of the specific area plan that was originally adopted and has since expired. But we did work in reference with that plan as well as coordination with Design Review for the layout and development of this site plan. Working with Design Review, there was a range of considerations that they had us enhance, both on the North Clay side as well as the southern side of the development. Wanted to be a little bit more compatible with future neighbor to the south. And additionally, to tie in the language of the kind of Art Street that was envisioned for 33rd Street and and kind of extending that to the north along Clay Street for a more cohesive development. From our last planning zoning recommendation, a couple of adjustments were made clarifying our our public parking spaces for the development, which are highlighted in yellow on the site. So as a parking summary recap, the Live, Work, Create District requires one parking space per per unit and so would require 14. We have a range of different unit types. And so with that, we have some two-car garages, some some one-car garages. And so our onsite for just the the two-car exceeds that 14 parking spaces. And then we also have additional onsite parking as well as eight off-street parking, which, you know, we wanted to make sure we were overparked for this for this use. One of the other considerations with especially public and commercial parking is the functionality of that space. And so in in some cases, I've seen PUDs where they try to propose a compact parking space or reduction in parking spaces. And with that, you have a lack of control and the flexibility. So we don't control what visitors come to a commercial space or potential business. And so we wanted to make sure that the public parking spaces that we are providing provide a range of vehicle type uses. And so with our current dimensions, you know, we're exceeding what would be the best-selling vehicle in the US right now, Ford F-150 in its length and width. And also plenty compatible with your Toyota Camry as well. So just wanted to point that as as clarification. Design Review was fairly rigorous, had us come back a couple of times really to vet out the adjacent property to the south. Originally, it was undetermined and then there was an application for a single-family residence. And so we wanted to make sure that we were were complementing that proposed use. And with our our common access drive central to the development, there was a concern with potentially having vehicular lights intruding onto that that there was a concern with potentially having vehicular lights intruding onto that, that single-family residence. And so in working with design review, we were able to create a solution with some enhanced landscaping, some reduction in the actual building envelope on, on that facade. And then also creating a privacy screen wall that creates a solid surface to eliminate any potential for light intrusion onto that development. As far as the concepts for the facade, 33rd is, is envisioned as an art street celebrating the Sorel Mitchell concept for the work create. So with that, we wanted to celebrate that in a range of different ways. We have some permanent architectural features to the building that are done in wire mesh and artful railing and perforated metal. We have some, some street features that we're looking at proposing as far as, you know, even a, a street light that potentially looks like paint. And then one of the more unique concepts that the owner wanted to develop was concept of having graphics that would be applied to the townhomes and then have the ability to adapt or modify those over time. So we found that art can be contextual, but it's also very organic. And so if you have a development or a business that you're wanting to operate out of here, you're able to complement that artwork to what you're doing and tell a story based on the tenant that actually lives there. And so with that, this could be something that's updated seasonally or specific to a business. In discussing that concept with designer view, they did have us go ahead and apply some of those same materials and aesthetics to North Clay. They felt that it was a little bare and applying that same language really tied in the cohesive nature of the street frontage that we were achieving on 33rd to North Clay. And so the owner was happy to oblige with that request. Much the same considerations on the south. Designer view also had us enhance that facade, both from a visual standpoint to this, to the neighbors, but also to tie in the proposed development more cohesively. In summary of the staff report, there were a couple of considerations that they wanted us to respond to more specifically. One of those was separation between buildings. We have an overlay for the zoning code that this is in, overlay for the live-work-create district. And then the, the overlay for the expired specific plan. And so between all those, there, there are some, you know, nuances that, that come to pass as far as which codes do apply for a certain development, which don't. And so we felt that it was prudent to make sure that life safety and building codes came first and, and were the most important to make sure we were preserving those factors. And then proposing a development that worked through recommendations for approval from design review and from planning and zoning really led us to the setbacks for the structures that we had. And so with that, we feel that we've enhanced the pedestrian accesses and we preserved the intent of the city code, especially on the, the perimeter and street facades. As far as minimum lot coverage, our proposed lot is about 22,000 square feet, which would exceed the live-work-create by about seven and a half times the minimum lot. And for the residential use for a planned unit development, we would exceed by 1.6. Where it gets a little confusing is you're proposing something as a live-work-create. It may be that since this is a for-sale product in the future, that everyone chooses to use this as just a residential dwelling. And in that case, we would be in perfect compliance. As soon as you apply a, a commercial standard to that overlay, the minimum lot size becomes more of a question. And that would be something, you know, of discussion. Where we feel is we're, we're, we're meeting the code in two ways and not being the code in one hypothetical way. That hypothetical way is going to be vetted out through tenant improvements and viewed either as a home occupation, which would still be considered residential use. Or if they do go for a full-blown commercial use, that is going to go through further municipal review and consideration in the future. So with that, as summary of our planning and development, some of the key criteria, the five criteria that, that was in staff report, providing a maximum choice of living environments for variety of housing building types. And we have both single car and dual car dwellings as well as a range of variety types in those uses. So we feel that we're meeting and exceeding that. Creating a more useful pattern of open space and recreational area. We feel that we've done a fairly good job of this establishing pedestrian connectivity, both on the urban street frontage as well as emulating around the development itself. For that, I'll kind of go back to the site plan to elaborate just slightly. So we do have the pedestrian sidewalks along the street. And working with the irrigation company, they recommended that we open up a portion of the canal and actually create a meandering path on the, you know, the alleyway side of this property, both as a landscape feature that's enhanced, but also something that could, could be enjoyed. Should this development extend in the future to the south, we can tie in and create a standard of, of a green belt system or pedestrian walking path that has opportunities to engage both to the south and to the west. And then this pathway that walks through the center of the development was also established as something that could be created as again, kind of a connection to pedestrian access, but also something that can engage that art and create more of a, a graphic opportunity for our work along that pedestrian pathway.
Mr. Mayor, let's say that we decided that we were going to develop to some degree, at least, Osage from 32nd to 37th. Is there room to do that?
I don't believe this would impede the, the enhancement of Osage Street because it's in a confined right-of-way now. Any improvements we made wouldn't expand the footprint to that. So I think this would be fine. Yes.
Okay, fine.
I don't remember three establishing a, a development pattern to preserve and utilize natural topography and geographic features. Feel that opening and enhancing that canal, creating that is something, an opportunity for public enjoyment exceeds that. Then using the land more efficiently, currently it's parking lot in the house. So we feel that putting thoughtfully developed, more dense housing on this is, is better use of the land. Then a, a land part in that's harmonious with the density transportation community around it. One of the considerations that, that we had early on was dialogue with the neighbors and community about, it should be more dense here. Should you have something that, you know, is, is more stories? And based on the amount of land that was able to be acquired and proposed, we feel that this is scalable and prudent to the developments around it. It's not ambitious and that we're trying to pack as many possible dwellings on and requesting a bunch of parking reductions and waivers to try to, to meet that. And we're not putting a, a single-family dwelling on this either. So feel that our, our client is, is kind of thoughtfully looked through what the comprehensive plan wants for this area. Really tried to develop something that meets that intent.
Well, we may have some issues with the parking. We have a business community that wants parking. A non-business community doesn't want it. And so that's for further discussion.
Yeah, we'll, we'll get a report from Jenna here in a few minutes, Ms. Thornborough, on the parking as it, as would be applied by our city code. So we will certainly address that issue in a few minutes.
Okay. I'll stand for eight questions at this.
Hey. Questions of Mr. Hatch? Great, thank you. You'll get the last word after the public hearing to come up and address any other questions that might come up during public testimony. Okay?
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hatch. Okay, Thornborough.
Thank you, Mayor, and members of the council. Mr. Hatch has done a great job in presenting the application. I'll, I'll provide salient points from the staff report. And so the, this PUD application, I don't know if it was ever specifically said, although you did see some images as for 14 units applied for as a live-work-create development. In the, there's not a subdivision that's being requested at this point in time. It's also a multi, considered a multifamily development. Both of the recommending bodies did recommend approval. However, it should be noted that as this application came through, it was applied for utilizing the base zoning designation. After the design review committee made their recommendation, the applicant had requested that staff review the live-work-create overlay regulations as, as to how this project adheres to that as well. And so the planning and zoning commission, while the project itself didn't change, the regulations that were reviewed shifted to the live-work-create overlay. And so the, the draft potential decision document that's been included in, in your packet includes conditions of approval for the project from both of the recommending bodies, again, recommending approval, but notes that the live-work-create is the standards that have been applied. Some details, this, this, the property is just slightly over half an acre. The base zone is C2. The, it is within the live-work-create overlay and in the live-work-create and neighborhood destination node, land use designations within the comprehensive plan. And the project consists of both three and four-bedroom units in four separate structures, each with a workspace on the ground floor and each having individual trash services. A planned unit development allows for deviations to code provided that the purpose of the planned unit development can be found to be met. And that is located on page 24 of the staff report or 141 of the packet in the packet or in Garden City Code 86B7. The application has requested that eight waivers to code be applied. These waivers can be found on page four of the staff report or 121 of the packet. For whatever reason, in the packet and the staff report, number one, the first waiver does not show that there's a five-foot rear setback request. It may or may not. Maybe that was just my computer because it printed just fine. And but there is a waiver request of the rear setback to a half an inch shy of, of four feet. And a second waiver request is that the live-work-create code requires a 25% ratio of workspace within a live unit, at least 25%. The larger units are only proposing 22% workspace. The smaller of the units do meet the 29, do meet that requirement at 29%. And in the live-work-create district, the maximum average housing size is 1,000 square feet. This application is proposing just under and just over 2,000 square feet per living unit. And so that's another waiver request. There is a slight waiver request on the parking dimensions. Garden City Code requires a 10 by 20 parking space, which would equate to a 20 by 20 garage. The applicant's proposing an 18 by 21 garage space. And as the applicant has gone through, Mr. Hatch went through the common open space that they're providing. And that's, that's just shy, that's shy of what code would require in overall square footage. And then in the live-work-create overlay, there, there's a step back required for buildings that are over 24 feet. There's a waiver requesting not to step that building back on the side and the front line. So it's a straight up and down building instead of going up and then staggering back. And as Mr. Hatch noted, that there is a request to reduce the perimeter landscaping with shifting how to handle that perimeter landscaping and how it will affect the adjacent neighbors with light intrusion with a structural solution. And then there's a request to reduce the setback between buildings, between structures to seven feet. And code requires that in two different locations to be 10 feet. So in the two different locations that it's required to be 10 feet is in the multifamily code requirements as well as the planned unit development requirements. But Mr. Hatch is absolutely correct in the live-work-create. That's not overlay district. That's not a requirement. Mr. Hatch did go over parking within the live-work-create overlay. The project meets or even exceeds the parking requirements. Where it meets the requirements or exceeds is opening up the, the garages. If there are two garages open, that's where it would exceed the parking requirements. There, it should be noted that there is a draft condition of approval that states that the parking cannot be enclosed. The commercial parking or non-residential parking cannot be enclosed during working hours. However, if, to, to the question related to parking, if not applying that live-work-create standard to the parking, this project would be deficient in that basically there's not guest parking accounted for. And then of the more interesting analysis to deal with, with this project, again, it is an overlay with a planned unit development that's being asked. So it, it, it is not a, a standard look at code and apply it situation. But that planned unit development does, the general standards do note requesting 10 feet between structures. Again, that's a planned unit development standard. It's not a live-work-create standard. But there is that request to seven feet. And then the other conflict perhaps with the planned unit development regulations in concert with the live-work-create standards is that if this application came through and were strictly residential, the planned unit development size requirements would be met. A planned unit development for residential is required to be 14,500 square feet, whereas a mixed-use project is required to be one acre in size. And so this application doesn't need that one acre for being a mixed-use project. And the, the live-work-create overlay is being applied. There is a condition that the applicant provide a legally binding document that the, the townhomes are one-to-one ratio with work units being provided as well. And so therefore that kicks that into the mixed-use category, although it should be noted that that's not defined in code. And it also should be noted that residential units can allow for home occupancy and thus non-residential uses. And so it gets very complicated in how to review that. I do want to note that the live-work-create definition within the comp plan, again, this is the comp plan definition, not code definition, notes that the live-work-create is intended for a mix of uses, including residential, retail, office, and small-scale industrial. Regulations should be primarily through form and not uses, including maintaining the existing subdivision pattern of small lots and limiting the maximum building footprint or square footage of the building in relation to the lot size. Large-scale development that consolidates lots and allows for larger-scale industrial commercial uses should be restricted. And so there may be somewhat of not necessarily a conflict, but some level of disagreement in how these are all working together. The standards that apply to this application for your conclusions of law are Garden City Code 86B7 and Garden City Code 86B2. And in that you're the final decision maker, you can approve, deny, remand this application to the recommending bodies or continue this application for more information. And with that, I stand for questions.
Okay. Let me. The applicant is applying live-work-create standards in his presentation. Is there anything in code that prevents him from doing that?
Mayor, there's nothing in code that prevents the applicant to request live-work-create standards to be applied.
Okay. Then is there anything in code that prevents the applicant from asking for waivers as applied in the live-work-create standards?
Mayor, there's nothing in code that prevents the applicant for asking for waivers. The planned unit development code regulations that 86B7, we can certainly pull up the language that it states in that, but it's the, really in the purpose statement, it states that planned unit development can request weight or deviations from code, provided that the purpose of the planned unit development is met. And then there's a number of items that must be met.
Thank you. I'm asking these questions because it's, there's a lot of pieces that we're trying to fit together here. And I just want the council to understand what our code may or may not prohibit. And so I wanted to be clear that the applicant, as I understand the application, there's no prohibition to the tact he's taking to get his approval. And that's, you know, let me, let's make sure we understand the parking too, just a little bit. So in the live-work-create application on this project, if using the standard that Mr. Hatch presented, it meets the parking standard.
Mayor, that is correct.
Okay. And then make sure I understand the waiver requests. So having units larger than 1,000 square feet?
Mayor, that is a request for a waiver.
Okay, right, okay. So my presumption is this would be a product for family. I'll ask Mr. Hatch that later if it comes up. Okay, are there, sorry, council, I just wanted to make sure that we had that, those basics in our mind. Is there questions of Ms. Thornborough? Yes?
So as I understand it, the parking requirement is met by what I'm going to call the garages being open and remaining open during business hours?
Mayor, Councilmember Page, that has been the recommendation to meet this through the recommending bodies. I believe that that was not discussed at design review. That was discussed at planning and zoning commission. But yes, and that's the non-residential component. That's meeting the residential's meant with the two-car garages, where there's only one parking space required per unit. It was how do you meet that non-residential component?
Other questions, Ms. Thornborough? Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
With that, we'll open the public hearing on PUD FY2021-0001. This will be an opportunity for the public to speak to this. I have here in the building one person signed up, Brian.
Mr. Mayor, I believe that that was signed up in error. He's not here for that issue. Okay.
Okay, you're here for a different issue?
Yes.
Okay. No, it's okay. When we get to your issue, wave at me or something. Okay, all right, all right, thank you. Got it. Is there anyone else here that has not signed up but would wish to testify on this particular PUD? Okay, see, no one in the room. We'll open it up to the, those joining us virtually. If you would, use your raise the hand feature in Zoom and the clerk will recognize you. Nothing?
No, Mr. Mayor.
Hey, going? Going? Hey, let the record reflect that no one joining us virtually has indicated an interest in testifying on this item. With that, Mr. Hatch, you want to come back, please? And we'll close out if there's any areas you believe you'd like to clarify. And of course, council, you're free to ask questions of Mr. Hatch when he's during his presentation. During his testimony, he's made his presentation.
As a follow-up to Hannah's, Jenna's presentation, I just wanted to indicate the first item here of our PUD summary indicates that a PD also allows reduction in lot dimensions, yard setbacks, and area requirements. And so we wanted to be respectful and trying to fit within, you know, three different kind of overlays and then objective and dream for that area that's expired. But we still wanted to try to do right by the city because we felt that there's a lot of very relevant and important elements in that specific area plan as well. And it was approved by the city of Garden City in the past. So we wanted to make sure we were doing that. In regards to the waiver request, through multiple hearings with designer view and multiple hearings with planning and zoning, these have come up and they've been discussed, they've been vetted, they've been refined. And so presenting this very itemized list, the majority of these work on an average basis, but there are exceptions that some are too, too, too small in area. And the average really kind of meets the intent of what that code is as far as the business areas. As far as parking goes, the, in talking to staff, our recommendation is to do a condition of approval for license agreement that those townhomes have to abide by that commercial code requirement of operations. If city council feels that that is, is too restrictive on that property, we would propose the consideration that we put towards planning zoning for just mandating that those be carports because then they would always be accessible always versus just business hours. And so I just throw that out as a consideration, but still would prefer to go with the recommendations of staff. I'll stand for any additional questions.
Okay. Any further counsel?
Mr. Hatch, I, first of all, thank you very much for your presentation and the information that you presented. I really do appreciate it and I want to commend you and let you know I appreciate the, this specific attention that you paid to the parking concerns. I am wondering, and this is a little bit out of the line here, but do you happen to have a floor plan for any of the units available?
We do have conceptual floor plans. I did not bring one tonight, so I don't have one with me.
Would you say that the floor plan and the development is, although identified as a family unit, I want to ensure that we're not looking at a floor plan that would actually be drawing in, let's say, a bunch of college students in a dorm-like floor plan. Does that make sense? So is it a four-bedroom, two-bath, three-bedroom, two-bath? Is it a four-bedroom with no kitchen, no family room and a bath?
Yeah, great question. So we have three-bedroom, four-bedroom units. Our three-bedroom unit is a two-bath and powder room. Powder room is used on the ground floor for that business. So should you have folks that need to use restroom facilities and you're able to do that? Are you pulling up floor plan? She's got to pull it up. And so as far as the four bedrooms go, much the same. Thank you. Okay. We have the floor plans. So for the office space, we do have that powder room. And so you're able to utilize that for the general public in that home occupancy setting. And then there's powder room on the ground floor and then two restrooms on the living space floor. For the other unit, very similarly, we got the two bathroom model, powder and the powder on the second floor. And the smaller unit would have, again, two bathrooms and the powders.
Thank you very much.
Yeah. Other questions? Very good. Thank you, Mr. Hatch. Thank you. With that, I'll close the public hearing on PUD FY2021-0001 and turn it to the council for discussion, deliberation, action.
Mr. Mayor and fellow councilmembers, I would share with you that over the course of the past two weeks, I've had two different constituents approach me and beg frankly for more family developments, family residence developments within the city. There's clearly a shortage of housing overall, but there's a particular pain for families entering and looking for housing within the valley. So I am overriding a lot of concerns based on that solicitation for family developments.
Thank you. Any other discussion? Hearing none, Councilmember Jorgensen, motion would be in order.
Mr. Mayor, I would propose that we move to approve PUD FY2021-0001.
Second.
Got a motion in a second to approve PUD FY2021-0001. Tenor of the maker, the motion is conditions of approval. Findings of fact contained in the staff report?
Yes.
Yeah, second. Okay. Hey. Motion's properly before us. Is there discussion on the motion? Hearing on the third call roll?
Councilmember Jorgensen?
Yes.
Councilmember Page?
Yes.
Councilmember Beaumont?
Yes.
Thank you. Go build it, Mr. Hatch. We need it. Yes. Yes. We'll take just a few-minute break before we start the appeal. So we'll recess, we'll reconvene at 7:31. Thank you. Of amendments to a new construction drive-through located at 5219 Chenda. Bear with me, we have a little different set of rules with the appeal process. Again, council members, I'm going to ask if any of you have a conflict of interest regarding this item?
No.
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 Okay. Okay, the items being appealed are in the hey, the items being appealed are lack of adequate parking, insufficient vehicle stacking, and due process. Next item, these are questions for Mr. Perry, you're representing the appellant. Okay, and Ms. Kunkel, you're representing the respondent. Okay. Okay. First question, do either of you have issues with the content of the record or the transcript?
No.
Okay. Which is part of your appeal, okay. Okay, the standard of review, the burden of proof is on the appellant. The order of hearing will be the appellant followed by the respondent. And then the appellant has an opportunity to have the last word. We're treating this as a non-denovo hearing, Mr. Adams?
Correct.
Okay. The council action will be to affirm, vacate, remand, or reverse. And identify the possible grounds for affirming or possible, or identify the grounds for vacating, remanding, or reversing. I think that covers this. With that, Mr. Perry, welcome. If you would, sir, place, state your name and address for the record and the floor is yours. Will do. I have a little PowerPoint to guide the discussion. They don't make these for tall people. Oh, sorry.
You can see it here.
Pull it up real quick for the Zoom members.
Okay, good evening, Mayor Evans, members of the City Council. My name is Samuel Perry. My address is 601 West Bannock Street in Boise. I'm an attorney for Gibbons personally, and I represent Tom and Tyler Nelson. As was just stated, we have the burden to prove that the Design Review Committee erred in approving the application. So just to start out, the Nelsens want me to make it very clear that they have nothing against a coffee establishment at this location. What they're worried about is whether it is properly entitled. And they're worried that it it hasn't been properly entitled. And as a result, they expect some adverse effects based on the lack of parking and the lack of stacking capacity for vehicles. And kind of, I think what this stems from is this is a very tiny lot. And there just isn't much room to accommodate parking and stacking. So we're also going to be raising procedural issues. This application was heard at the July, July 6, 2021 public hearing. At that hearing, there was no verbatim transcript recorded. I understand it's the position of the city that that was cured by the various application materials and other written materials as well as detailed minutes. I disagree that those minutes were detailed enough to cure that defect, but I'll get into that later. And what the Nelsens are looking for is for these deficiencies to be addressed. So we would request that you remand this back to the Design Review Committee to address the deficiencies that we'll discuss here. So the first thing is the parcel size. If you look in every report, every application, and every decision, the parcel size sizes listed as 2.41. But the parcel size is actually 0.283. There's a substantial difference in the parcel size. Now, I understand that initially, the parcel size was given because they anticipated some lot line adjustments. However, with the most recent Design Review application, the lot line adjustments had already been finished and they still reported the parcel sizes 2.41 acres. This is material because a larger parcel is going to be able to accommodate this intense use easier. But this is a very small parcel. And I I see that the respondents pointed to a few spots in the staff report and in the transcript where the applicant talked more specifically about this parcel, but you won't see the actual size listed in any of the decisions, including the the most recent decision by the Design Review. They, one of their findings of fact was this is a 2.41 acre parcel. So because the parcel is so small, it raises questions about whether parking is adequate. Now, we received some question when we first raised this issue at the Design Review stage. Doesn't this seem like something that should be taken care of at the conditional use permit stage? Well, yeah, you normally, but the Planning and Zoning Commission for this application specifically deferred the parking issues to Design Review. And then when it reached Design Review, there was barely any discussion at all about parking. The staff report simply said parking is sufficient. It did not list or analyze the parking standards. So up on the screen here is just the excerpt of that CUP decision. And we don't believe that Design Review anticipated or remembered or ever knew that they were delegated that responsibility from the planning and zoning. So again, the committee didn't analyze Garden City Parking Standards, which I'm showing up here on the screen. There's no analysis of the standards in the staff report. There's no analysis of the standards by the applicant in their narrative letter or any part of their application, and there's no findings related to the standards in the decision. Now, the respondent's latest letter has a pretty good analysis of these standards, but that's pretty much the first time you'll see it. And also, you'll see mention here and there of different, somebody mentioned public transit at some point, but these applications aren't some scavenger hunt for information. You know, this has gone on long enough. There's so much record, you could go through and pick different things and say, oh, that that seems like that. You know, implicates that standard and such, but there's no part cross-parking agreement. For these intense uses, it's pretty common to have a cross-parking agreement. In fact, the Design Review Committee at first was going to require it, but then they didn't require it. And at first, the applicant was working with the neighbor to get it, but then it was never made a condition of approval. Now, why, why did the Design Review initially think that they wanted to require it? And and I think that it was because they anticipated parking conflicts. But when they found out the applicant couldn't get the agreement, the neighbor wouldn't agree to it. Then they dropped the requirement, but that's arbitrary. Dropping the requirement just because they couldn't get it doesn't mitigate any of the potential parking conflicts that are anticipated when you have this type of a use on such a small piece of property. Now, by the way, this application shows four standard parking places and one ADA parking place. The applicant said they're going to have four employees at all times, at least, on site. So where are the customers going to park? And this is not just strictly a drive-through. They have a walk-up window. They have a customer restroom, and they have spot for at least 10 patrons to dine outside. Where are they going to park? Are they going to park at 53rd Street, you know, over 100 feet away, maybe more? Or are they going to park at the neighbors improperly? But as a practical matter, the applicant has little control over what their patrons will do. That's why proper entitlement is important. So parking along 53rd Street is available, but how much is available and how far is it? And where will the pedestrian traffic flow from 53rd to the walk-up window? These are all a bunch of questions that they weren't necessarily scrutinized and addressed, and that's why the Nelsens want to scrutinize it now. What's the impact on traffic? Especially when the parcel at the end of 53rd Street that's behind Fred Meyer is developed. So now on to the stacking issue. In a nutshell, here's my argument on stacking. The applicant admitted that stacking at the current location is less than optimal. That's my word. He said stacking workability and drivability issues, we all know. There it is on the screen. That's the transcript from the July 22, 2020 hearing. The new plan doesn't improve stacking at all. Even though now it's two lanes of stacking instead of one, it's still just an 11-car capacity. Applicant alluded to the fact that they would possibly be able to stack up to 25 cars by using the drive aisles as well as the stacking lanes. The drive aisles are for access, not stacking. The easement, so they did obtain a shared easement agreement with the neighbor. It is limited to ingress and egress. Not stacking. In fact, the applicant agreed not to stack in drive aisles. You see here, it was written in the bottom. White Capital agrees not to allow stacking in drive aisles. And John Wood signed it, who's the neighbor. It looks like there's an RW next to that handwritten part. I presume that that is for Richard White and then a signature by Travis Stroud. So they agree not to stack in the drive aisles. Then they are limited to 11 cars. Where will the 12th car go? This is just from the July 6, 2021 minutes that recorded that there was an agreement between Dutch Brothers and John Wood not to have cars block the shared drive aisles. And I see that this side window is blocking part of that. Is it just drag if I? Awesome. Thank you. Okay, stacking wouldn't be allowed anyway, even if they hadn't agreed to stack there. Under your code, you can't stack in a lane that is the same lane that's used for access and parking. And stacking's not allowed to create an impact off-site. Those drive aisles are not on the the side of this development. So these drive lanes are specifically for ingress-egress access. They, so they won't be able to stack at that point. So they're going to be able to to stack 11 vehicles at the current site down the road. They can stack 11 vehicles. Where's the improvement? Where will the 12th car go? And Nelsons are worried that the cars are going to stack along 53rd Street, and right now it's a dead end, but what's going to happen when it develops and who's going to ask these questions and what are the remedies going to be after this thing's already constructed? And then we have problems. Nelsons are worried about emergency vehicles being blocked on 53rd. They're worried about how access to their own property will be affected. Okay, on to this procedural issue. There were several procedural errors along the way in this application. One of the the hearings, the July 22, 2020 hearing was not properly noticed. So, excuse me, sorry. So it was continued to a later date. The July 6, 2021 hearing was not properly noticed. So it was continued to another date, but they went ahead and took the the staff report was on July 6, and the applicant's presentation was on July 6. And I presented some testimony for Nelsons on that day. And then when the hearing was continued to August 2, there was nothing left to share. None of that staff report or applicant testimony was repeated. And so everything was on that July 6 day. That was the day they failed, the the city failed to keep a verbatim record. And the minutes that the minutes were not detailed enough to cure that. The minutes don't give any description of what the staff presentation was about. The minutes don't give any description of what the applicant's testimony. And so we're missing some material representations. They're not caught in the minutes. They're not caught on any transcribable record, one of those being that when this Design Review hearing was the first before the Design Review, it included an office building. When they removed the office building, it required them to go through Design Review again, and the applicant represented that in essence, and I am paraphrasing, so I, you know, in essence, hey, the only thing we did was take the office out. So they implied that all the previous representations that we made about this application, they still apply. Now, what I just told you, you're going to have to kind of take my word for it, I guess, or remand this so it can be properly done because that wasn't captured in the record. The fact of the matter is that last year, the applicant told the Design Review that they were going to be able to stack up the 25 cars in the drive aisles. And, you know, I I don't remember what else we could have missed on July 6. So this is not only a constitutional violation, procedural due process, but it's also a violation of Idaho Code, Section 676536, which I've put up here on the board that requires a transcribable verbatim record of proceedings. Now, as I said, I don't agree the minutes were detailed enough. And a court would likely find this, or at least it would be an open question as to whether this is a clear error. And so in conclusion, Nelsons, they're not just worried about whether this project received sufficient scrutiny and whether the Design Review exercised sound judgment, reason, rationale. They're also worried about how this all came about and why there are so many procedural errors. And, you know, how how did it prejudice their rights? And so I would ask you respectfully, please, to remand this to the Design Review so that it can be done the right way and so that these deficiencies can be addressed. And I'll stand for any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Perry. Questions, counsel?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I would agree with counsel that these are remandable questions to Design Review, and I I would move that we remand this to Design Review.
We will take that up after we hear from the respondent here. And then Mr. Perry can finish up and then we'll have that matter properly before the council, so. Thank you, Mr. Perry.
Mr. Mayor, I apologize. I do have a question for Mr.
Oh, I'm sorry, Mr. Perry. We, a question came up. I I didn't catch.
Mr. Perry, you've referenced the the meeting on July 6.
Yeah.
And you indicated that it was not properly noticed. Is that correct? And then you also stated, but you did go ahead and provide testimony or information at that hearing?
Yes.
Even knowing that it was not noticed properly?
Yes.
Can you explain why you went ahead with that?
Well, in administrative law, one of the biggest fears is that you don't exhaust your administrative remedies. So if the the meeting is going to go forward and I bow out because I think that there might be a procedural problem, then I could be accused of not exhausting my administrative remedies. The city decided to go forward with the meeting, and I have a duty to my client to to make sure that I don't lose out on any opportunities. So I was obligated to to move forward. It wasn't my decision whether to move forward or not move forward, but when the city decided, I was obligated to present my case.
Okay, thank you for that explanation.
Great. Thank you, Mr. Perry. Thank you. Okay. We'll now hear from the respondent. Ms. Kunkel, welcome. If you would, give us your name and address for the record.
Anne Kunkel, K-U-N-K-E-L. I'm an attorney with Varan Wardwell, and the address is 242 North 8th Street, Suite 200, Boise, 83702. And I am here representing the applicant, the ultimate user of the property and the owner. So we have Rick and Brian White, who will be the the end users. Mr. Stroud is the current owner of the property, and Mr. Lakes is our architect who has shepherded this through the process thus far.
Thank you.
Um, I do not have a PowerPoint presentation for you guys. Um, I don't think that there is a lot to talk about from our perspective. It boils down to parking and spoils down to stacking. And we believe that Design Review did everything that they were required to do in making the determinations that, one, there was sufficient parking for this type of use and that the stacking requirements also met the code. I will, to address some initial issues, and this is also in our written materials as well, just to make some clarifications. We do agree that the larger project size was in the applications themselves, but when you read staff reports and the findings in those staff reports and the drawings and site projects, the insight projections we gave them, it was always on the small it was always on the smaller footprints, so it wasn't as if staff was looking at a much larger footprint and not realizing exactly where the drive-through kiosk would go. Um, also, um, yes, there was a statement at one point, since this was a kind of an overriding theme that our, the applicant did assert at one point that we would have a cross-parking agreement. When that statement was made, we were negotiating in good faith with the adjacent landowner to get that cross-parking agreement in place. That was going to be an extra benefit to the property. Unfortunately, those negotiations were unsuccessful. Um, and staff deemed that that wasn't necessary to satisfy the parking requirements. And then lastly, because it was discussed so much, there was, there is an assertion that applicant said that we would stack twenty-five cars onto the property. If you look at the transcript and that it's footnoted in our response letter, what applicant was saying was how many cars it would take to be stacked on the project and on the site to reach fifty-third street, which was in a response to Mr. Nelson, who had attended that meeting, asking how many cars would it take to get off of the site onto the public thoroughfare of fifty-three? It was never represented that we would be stacking twenty-five cars as part of our project. It's always been eleven. It was eleven in the original drawings. It has stayed eleven the entire time of what we'll stack on site. Regarding the, the sufficient parking, we respectfully disagree with the appellate that staff did not go through and make the required findings. As you can see from my letter and what we pointed out from the record, staff did look at the four available criteria. There wasn't a parking report done, so that wasn't to be considered. They did consider how much use it would be. Garden City's code currently is silent as to the minimum number of parking spaces that are required for a drive-through like this. Um, so staff looked at other surrounding municipalities and actually imposed a higher parking count on this particular site that you would see in surrounding municipalities with four parking spaces and one handicap space. Also, I would like it to be clear that although applicant has shown up and said that we have four employees and more likely than not, they will park there. It is not employee-only parking. It is first come, first served parking for those four spots and the ADA space. And we do have sufficient on off-site parking adjacent on fifty-third, which is a criteria that staff reviewed and considered and developing the four parking standard or the four parking spaces with the one ADA compliant space. In terms of the amount of walk-up that you will see, um, at the plaza, we've looked at historic numbers. This historically at other Dutch Brothers has not created a large foot traffic with off-site parking or people parking on-site and then coming up to the plaza. The plaza was included as part of the design for two purposes. One was for the design element of a drive-through. And then the second purpose was to provide a pullback and seating areas to meet code for a drive-through and then looking at what we would need for parking and how that need would increase the parking. So there was an assertion that design review was misconstrued in the purpose of the plaza. And we don't believe that that was a correct statement, that staff and designer you did look at both of them. They looked at one for the connectivity through the design. And then they made sure that it include the plaza as the requirement of a drive-through. For these reasons, with the off-site parking that's available, for the onsite parking that is there, for the very de minimis foot traffic that we have seen. And again, as you will see in the records, less than one percent of sales come from these walk-up type of sales. We believe staff and design review did properly look at and characterize the criteria and put in place a higher number of parking spaces than you would see in other municipalities for uses of this type. Regarding stacking, I, I don't have a lot more to say about stacking. It seems that we have some tension between an idea that applicant represented that we would have twenty-five cars stacked on the site as part of our project, whereas the record clearly reflects that we would only have eleven. Again, the discussion about the twenty-five cars was how many cars it would take to stack off-site to make an impact on the public thoroughfare of fifty-third street. That was, again, is this in the record, would be a whole lot of cars to get to twenty-fifth, excuse me, fifty-third street to impact that thoroughfare. So eleven is what's always been proposed. That wasn't changed with the design review when we made, or the design modification. Truly, the only design modification would, which required us to go back to design review was removing the office component. And because that was such a large percentage of the original product, staff thought that that necessitated a review back. So that did not change the design or the stacking counts that have been originally proposed with the drive-through kiosk. And I think it's important that we remember what this is being used for. It's a drive-through kiosk. It is not a place intended for people to park and sit. The amenity is there, but is underutilized in almost every location that we have that. So for those reasons, we believe, and one more clarification, I do apologize. There was a, there was a distinction or there was a analogy drawn to our current location at Chindon. Um, and the problems that it, that does have with stacking. We have now double stacked the lanes, which we do believe that that will help in stacking requirements and you won't and it's further away from a public street. So even if there is slightly more stacking on this project, which we do not concede there would be, it would take a much, much larger, up to twenty-five cars before a public street would be impacted, unlike the current location with sitting so close to Chindon. So for these reasons, uh, we believe that staff and designer you did properly look at parking and the required parking counts, applied a consistent parking requirement of four spaces with one ADA space. And we believe that when looking at the stacking requirements and how our project will be used and what we've represented, that the stacking requirements for a drive-through and its impact on a public street and moving off to a public street have also been shown to be de minimis in such a way that staff and design review could find the project acceptable. For these reasons, we would request that you affirm the design review's holding, um, and move forward with the project. I'll stand for any questions.
Thank you. Questions, counsel?
Yes, I, if you don't mind, is your perception similar to Mr. Perry's regarding procedural concerns?
The procedural concerns?
Yes. The lack of proper notice on the meetings? The lack of a complete, um, transcript?
I believe, I, I believe, um, this, I agree, not believe, I agree with the city's analysis that those have been properly rectified with the written record. And based on the fact that Mr. Perry and his client, I apologize, I'm not sure if your client was with you that day, but Mr. Perry was at the July sixth meeting that he was able to attend, asked questions and did get a very written detailed report through the minutes itself. So the, just because due process violations may occur, there is a methodology to cure those. And I believe that the city has done what is necessary to cure those, so there's not a due process violation.
But do you believe that there was a proper notice given for the meetings?
I think we can all agree that there wasn't proper notice given for the meetings because we re-held the meeting on August second. But again, the parties who were in interest knew about the meeting, were at the meeting and had the opportunity to participate in the meeting. So they were not harmed by the improper notice of the wrong date. Right, thank you. Are there any other questions?
Any further questions? Great, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Hey, uh, Mr. Perry, uh, rebuttal?
Thank you. Mayor, council members? So I want to start out by conceding that the site plan did show a smaller parcel, but did never called out how many acres, how many square feet. So by looking at the, the parcel, it'd be impossible without some context, without some size of adjoining parcels to really understand how small this was. So we're not, we're not claiming that there was anything wrong with the, the site plans or anything, but that two-point-four-one just kept getting listed as the parcel size in all, um, the reports, decisions and everything. Um, again, I want to reiterate that just because negotiations fail on a cross-parking agreement does not mean that the parking concerns disappear. And so if the, if the cross-parking agreement fails, let, let's get creative and let's think of some ways that we can regulate, um, the, the patrons. Because they're not going to have any idea that they're not allowed to park on the neighbors for twenty-five seconds while they run up to the, to the walk-up window or use the restroom or even to, to sit down for a while and eat. They don't know that. So they're not going to skip over the close. And there's a lot of parking at the neighbors and come walking all the way from fifty-third. As a practical matter, it's just not going to happen unless there's some creative solutions. Um, I disagree about the context on the twenty-five stacking at that July twenty-second meeting. In my opinion, that, the context was that the applicant admitted the stacking was less than ideal at the current location. He said they can stack eleven. And he said it was less than ideal. And then he went on over the course of that hearing to represent that this new plan would be better, would have more stacking. But they, they do have the double lanes. It's a nice design, but it's only eleven. So where will the twelfth car go? And Dutch Bros is a, it's popular and a lot of people roll through there. And according to my client, he's seen over thirteen on a Sunday morning at the current location. Um, we have anecdotal information that, and I'm, i- it's not on the record, so I, I won't even be specific, but it's very popular, even among my own family members. So even if walk-up to the walk-up window is very low, doesn't happen infrequent, you know? It still happens. It's not zero. So where will they park? Now, maybe it's a great idea if, if we have a condition of approval that is the employees will park on fifty-third. And then there's an answer to that question. They can park in those, those parking places because they will no longer be used by the employees as an idea. There's, there's a lot of creative things that we could do to make this work. Nelsons aren't trying to drop a bomb in this. They just really want to see this properly entitled. It, it's not just a plaza. It's seating for ten outside. There's a walk-up window. And then just finally, the lack of notice in the July sixth meeting did not likely harm my client because we were able to come to the August second. But the lack of a verbatim record, especially because we believe that there were material representations. And I don't have my, my PowerPoint up anymore, but in my letter, I, I footnote to it. And in the PowerPoint, I showed that the mi- the minutes for the staff report, oral presentation, said nothing. And for the applicant's presentation, initial presentation of the application said nothing. There was no minutes taken until testimony was taken and then during deliberation. But there were material representations that were not captured in the record that happened at staff and applicant initial presentations. And I, I do believe that prejudiced my client as he prepared for this appeal. And so, uh, that's all I have. I'll stand for questions or.
Thank you. Anything further, counsel?
Mr. Mayor, I would like to ask Mr. Waddams.
Yes, uh, anything further for Mr. Perry? Okay, thank you, Mr. Perry. Hey, uh, matters before the council properly now.
Your Honor, Mr. Mayor, can I just for a point of order, just connect, clarify the record that we have in front of us right now?
Certainly.
For, uh, before deliberations. Um, so the record's a little clunky and I know the council always revert, reviews the packet in detail, but just for the, for our record and for our purposes here, uh, you have a staff report from Mr. Thornborough that's on page two twenty-two of your packet. Um, and that hyperlinks all of the record that was below. So, uh, you'll see some hyperlinks. So, um, this body, the council's going to have to decide what to do with the findings of fact conclusions, a law and decision. That's hyperlinked into her memo. So if anybody, at some point in time, we are going to have to go line by line through that finds of fact conclusions, a law decision and see if the council agrees with it or not. Um, and so that's hyperlinked. Uh, her staff report is in the main packet of page two twenty-two. Uh, the Mr. Perry's appeal statement starts at two twenty-five. And then it goes to the transcripts. And then after the transcripts, there's finally when we get, uh, Ms. Kunkel's, uh, response. So we have, uh, the appellate's initial appeal statement in here. And that's at two twenty-five. We have Ms. Kunkel's response to that. It's a written response. It's on page two seventy-five. The transcripts are, uh, those are the, those book in the transcripts and then the record below is hyperlinked. So just, I thought that would help, uh, guide the discussion. Uh, and if there are legal questions, uh, like council member Jorgensen, uh, inferred or whatever, I'd be happy to answer those.
Okay.
Um, mayor, members of the council, just one other, um, point of clarification to get on Mr. Waddams' coattails. And because you will have to hypothetically go through, um, conclusion of law by conclusion of law. There is a hard copy at your, at your stations.
Thank you. Okay, uh, Councilman Jorgensen, your, your, nice question.
What's Mr. Waddams regarding the transcript? Um, we've heard that, uh, that the deficiency's been cured by minutes and, and information provided subsequently. Um, do you have or can you provide information on how deficient the audio transcript is?
I would be happy to. And, and actually, Mr. Perry and I corresponded both verbally and then I followed up with a letter. I did not include the letter because it'd be new material that wasn't below in front of design review. But there's no question that they were procedural defects. Um, I mean, the city has admitted it. And Miss Thornborough has signed an affidavit saying that one of the proceedings on July sixth was, was not recorded. And so the rules on these things, I'll start with the rule on the noticing. The rule on the noticing is that there's improper notice. That would be a basis for remand unless the person that's complaining about it had an opportunity to testify. So in this case, uh, Mr. Perry, on the guy from Mr. Nelson, did get an opportunity to testify. Had he walked away, and he's kind of in a, a prickly spot because he, I mean, his client's not got one of the walk away, but if he walks away, he might have an argument. But because he testified, there's really no prejudice there. So that's the law on inadequate noticing, as I recall it. Uh, the more, the more concerning issue is the lack of the transcript. And so the law or the rule on the lack of transcript is under loophole. There has to be a verbatim, uh, transcribable record. If that's clear, everybody will agree to that. But, uh, the city messed up, um, because of Zoom, because of the pandemic, for whatever reason, it just wasn't reported. City has apologized, city has looked at it. And in this case, I think, uh, it has been cured. So number one, there was a defect, absolutely. Um, no question about that. Then the bigger question is whether it was cured. And in my professional opinion, my legal opinion, and Mr. Perry disagrees with me, and I hope a judge would agree with me. I think the defect had been cured. It's been cured by several different ways. Uh, this hearing was continued into August. And so in August, it was recorded and there's a transcript of the, uh, the proceeding from August. In that proceeding, Mr. Perry testified. So he was able there to, he was there to, uh, represent his client's interests. His position was made known and the objections were made part of the record. And that's one of the transcripts that's in your packet tonight. So I think it was cured by the continued hearing in August, coupled with the minutes. Uh, the minutes are part of your record, uh, hyperlinked. The records from July sixth are pretty thorough. Uh, again, with respect to Mr. Perry, he and I disagree. He thinks they're not adequate enough. Uh, I think, I've seen a lot of minutes that have a lot less than that. So I think it's cured by the fact that he, uh, got to testify in August. They're detailed minutes. There's a detailed finds of fact and conclusions of law. All written statements are in the record. All written exhibits are in the record. And so this is different than perhaps some other cases where there's just, you know, no recording and no reading. In this case, basically, there was a redo offered. It was a continued hearing into August. So my, I mean, my legal opinion is it was cured. Um, I think, I would like to think that reasonable minds would agree with me. I can't, my crystal ball doesn't always work. I can't promise you the judge would agree with me. Um, but that is when, that's my legal conclusion of the life of the transcript.
Thank you. Okay, uh, the deliberation on this, counsel, uh, Mr. Thornborough has kindly printed this out, so we don't have to, uh, Work through the. The record. It really, for your purposes, if you'll turn to. The decision, design review decision on page six, I believe is where we start. And at item twenty four, for those of you in the audience. Twenty four reads, in order to approve a design review application, the design committee shall make the following findings. And there's a list of findings. And I'll read the standard and then. The options relative to the standard are. The applicant application is compliant. Either it doesn't. Apply or it's noncompliant. So we have several of these, number of these. And properly deal with the appeal, we need to go through these. So. We'll start with the first one. The standard is the proposed design is in conformance with the purpose of the zoning district. And all dimensional regulations of that district. The design review committee determined it was compliant. So the standard. And the explanation was if the application meets this finding, the application is located off West. Chindon Boulevard and the C two general commercial. And the mixed use commercial future land use designation, the applicant has already obtained a conditional use permit for the use of drive through establishment. As it is required by Garden City Code. So. The matter before you at this particular moment is that the design review committee properly conclude that the standard was compliant.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
This this particular standard, where I hang up with this is the required dimensional regulations of the district. We've heard testimony today of conflicting material differences in the size of the parcel. And while I don't think that was nefarious or purposeful. I do believe that what our design review committee saw was a misrepresentation of what that parcel is. Again, not that I am pointing a finger of blame, but. My concern is that that was either misunderstood or mis- or misrepresented.
Hey, any other comments on this one?
No, I would concur. I agree with council member Paige on that.
Okay. So counsel. So council member Paige, is it your position that? Design review committee aired in calling the standard compliant?
It is my opinion.
Okay. Councilmember Jorgensen, do you want me to formally do a vote on this, Charlie, or ask them individually?
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, I think just for the clarity of the record, because this is a contentious issue, I think diligence would be good. If and also I would say this, if the council disagrees with that explanation, what is the correct explanation? I mean, it's not, I would submit that we don't need, staff doesn't need to just know that council disagrees with it. We need.
Question for the attorney. As I see it, the matter before us is, you know, an option we have is to remand this back to the design review for for further findings. Perhaps their findings were correct. Perhaps they understood that all along. But I think that we have a level of uncertainty in what's been presented today.
Council member Paige, you're absolutely correct. This could be remanded, but for guidance for the design review and for also due process, procedural due process issues. If the council could guide design review and and the applicant and everybody involved. As to what you think the issue is. If you think that there just was insufficient evidence or insufficient information, that would be sufficient. You know, suffice, but just to give us guidance, because there will be written findings of fact conclusions, a lot of decision. From the council on each one of these items. The staff has to track it up.
I agree with council member. Paige. Thank you, Councilmember Beaumont. Yeah. So. Councilmember Paige, you believe your determination is this standard is noncompliant. And. Because the information to determine that C two compliance was was. Insufficient.
Misstated or yeah.
Okay.
And again, I don't know that that's, I'm not saying that's intentional.
I'm not, I know. I don't want to put words in your mouth. I'm just trying to get to his point where we got him.
I think it's a material fact that I I can't, I cannot say. That that's compliant. That's a standard. I just can't, I can't get there.
I can't either. Okay, do you want me to ask for motion? Okay, all right. Councilmember Paige, would you form that in a motion for?
Yes, sir. Mr. Mayor, I I move that we remand this to the design review committee. For.
No, we're gonna go through, we're gonna go through all these standards first. We're just, the motion is to deal with this particular. Standard, C two standard. Because we've got about ten or twelve.
Yeah, I saw that there's. I saw that there's many I from my, well, okay.
Okay.
We'll do it that way if you like.
Well, it's I think what Mr. Waddams is asking me to do. I'm sorry. Blame, blame the lawyer.
And and just as a as an aside for 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 council and for mayor, my line of thinking is we don't get to procedural issues here if we have. You know, material. Differences in in the record and I prefer not to get to procedural. Error in what's been committed. If we can redo it and do it right, that's my preference.
Okay, so Mr. Mayor, if the if the motion is to remand it because there was inadequate or insufficient information in front of the designer view. And you can point to some specific areas for for the written findings that you want to have to go through each one of these.
Okay, and I think there may be more, but this is the one that jumped out at me when I looked at this in preparation for the meetings.
I mean, if the council's leaning towards a remand and I don't, you know. But it'd be nice for all the parties and for designer group for everybody to know exactly what they should be working on. Or what is lacking or what's insufficient.
You know, I mean, for. Not to put my own spin on this, but. This is, this is a great project. It's a great business in our community. I think this can be fixed. But I I don't think it's properly entitled.
Well.
So I would, I would move. To mayor, to your point, I would move. That we find standard. Number. That the proposed design is in conformance with the purpose of the zoning district and all dimensional regulations of that district. That we find not compliant.
Okay, that emotion. Okay, and. Mr. Waddams is the record on his reasoning for that sufficient.
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Okay, I've got a motion before us. Is there any further discussion? All in favor of declaring. This particular standard noncompliant, indicate by saying aye.
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 Okay, unanimous, okay. The next one, the proposed design adheres to standards for the protection of health, safety and general welfare.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I'm persuaded that there is material difference in adequacy of stacking. Which could potentially back traffic up onto a street. A major street, in fact. That could jeopardize the. Health, safety and general welfare of of this. Of this city. And for that reason, I move that we find. That the proposed design does not adhere to standards for the protection of health, safety and general welfare.
Second. And a motion and a second, any discussion? You're not all in favor, say aye.
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 Hey, motion carries unanimously. Next, next one, proposed design creates a sense of place and contributes to the uniqueness of the different districts and neighborhoods within the city.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I find that the applicant is in compliance with this standard, this condition. That the proposed doc design does create a sense of place and contributes to the uniqueness of the different districts and neighborhoods within the city.
I second.
Thank you. I've got a motion and a second. Further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
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 Motion passes unanimously. Next one, proposed design improves accessibility of development to nonmotorized and public modes of transportation.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I find this not a not applicable. We've heard testimony that there's a plaza and walk up window. Nevertheless, we've also heard testimony that. A very small portion of business actually comes that way. And I I just think that this is a mostly a drive through situation and nonmotorized. Modes of transportation are not likely to happen, although they probably do.
Hey.
That's my motion.
Okay, thank you. Got a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Hey, got a motion in a second that this particular item is nonapplicable. So further discussion? Go ahead, I'm sorry.
I apologize. I I'm struggling with. Last sentence, all proposed designs have to focus on nonmotorized forms of transportation. First of all, I struggle when anybody uses all ever, but. Based on that, I I would vote nay.
Okay. Got a motion on the floor to put this in the nonapplicable category. Is there any further discussion? Hey. About a split vote on this call, please.
Councilmember Beaumont?
Yes.
Councilmember Paige?
Yes.
Councilmember Jorgensen?
Nay, no.
Okay. Next one, proposed design supports a development pattern in nodes rather than strip commercial along arterial corridors.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I would agree with the findings of the design review committee. This application meets the finding. While the application appears to be focused on connection with Chindon Boulevard, it has proposed connections to the adjacent parcels of land. Help enhance the streetscape and avoid commercial strip aesthetic aesthetics. And I would concur with that finding.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
Got a motion and a second. Further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. We'll move on to the next one. The proposed design supports a compact development pattern that enables intensification of. Development and changes over time.
Mr. Mayor, again, I would concur with the findings of the. Design review committee, but the applicant meets the findings. It supports a compact development. It utilizes current currently vacant hard surface lot. Maximizing pedestrian circulation through a system of sidewalks. That which connect development to adjacent businesses.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
Hey, got a motion, a second. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Councilmember Beaumont, I didn't pick up your vote.
I said aye.
Oh, okay, I'm sorry, I didn't. My. My end. Sorry, thank you. Okay, carries unanimously. Next one, proposed design. Provides outdoor spaces and landscaping compatible with the southwest Idaho climate conditions and encourages pedestrian activity.
And Mr. Mayor, while we didn't hear on. On this today, on this particular issue, I have no reason to doubt that designer dug deep into this and. That it meets the finding insofar that the findings are that the applicant, the applicant. Proposes landscaping that's compatible with Garden City code as well as the southwest Idaho climatic conditions. The landscape plan also takes into consideration the pedestrian as well as automobile. By creating privacy screens and clear vision triangles to not only enhance the visual appeal, but help aid in the safety and privacy of the people. Using this site. I couldn't have said it better.
Very good. Motion, do I have a second?
Second.
We've got a motion and second. Is there further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
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 Okay, thank you. Motion carries. Hey, council, that's that's all of them. So council member Paige.
Mr. Mayor, point of order, I'm sorry to interrupt.
No, that's all right.
So there were also some legal issues raised regarding procedural due process. From my position. The council could comment on that or not, because the council remaining on other issues. It's up to the council and the council, whether the council would like to provide any insider guidance on that. And it also, it sounds like we're getting ready to go back. It sounds like there's gonna be a motion to remand. It's only gonna be a remand on certain issues. It's not gonna be a complete redo. It's gonna be a remand for the issues that the council disagrees with.
Mr. Waddams, would the presumption be though that? If it were remanded, that there would be a. Transcribable audio record created?
Yes.
And. And is there any reason for the council to chime in on that?
It's within the council's discretion. I just raise it because Mr. Perry did raise those issues. So it's within the council's purview on what to say about that.
Okay. Okay, Mr., I'm sorry, council member Paige, I.
I'm prepared to make a motion. The council members are ready.
Okay.
I I would only, to Mr. Waddams' comments, I would state that. I would defer to Mr. Waddams and his advice as the city's attorney. Therefore, I have to assume that it's defensible that we have cured. The gaps. Created by the 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 previous reports.
Thank you. Motion, council member. Mr. Mayor, I move that we remand. Yes, R Y F, excuse me, D S R F Y two thousand twenty dash twenty one to the design review committee. To address claims of inadequate parking, inadequate vehicle stacking and insufficient due process. I would. Point the committee to legal counsel for further instruction on. Moving forward to be sure we have the proper. Process elements in place.
Okay, thank you. Do I have a second?
I would second that.
They've got a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, the clerk call roll on this motion.
Councilmember Jorgensen?
Yes.
Councilmember Paige?
Yes.
Councilmember Beaumont?
Yeah, yes.
Okay, thank you. The matter. Is remanded. The to design review. Hey, we'll move now to item G three. Resolution eleven oh two dash twenty one approving the renewal of a service agreement for canine care and management services. For fiscal year twenty twenty two between Garden City and Homeward Bound LLC. Allowing the mayor to execute the agreement.
Is that at the same cost as last year?
There's a two percent increase, very modest increase.
Yeah.
Oh, I'm sorry, three, three percent increase.
Sounds reasonable. I move.
Go ahead, council member.
Okay, I move that we have first proof revolution. Okay, I move that we approve Resolution 1102-21, Resolution approving the renewal of a service agreement for K nine care and management services.
Second.
Got a motion and a second, is there further discussion?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
As an aside to this agenda item, I do feel a duty, much like we heard Councilmember Jorgensen give us some commentary, I have had a number of constituents reach out about a familiar issue of our feral cats. And I know that this resolution does not address that. But just, just ask that as a council, maybe we look for creative ways going forward if we have room in our budget to make some, some sort of a creative solution for that. But I, I am ready to vote on the motion.
Okay, thank you, council member.
Mr. Mayor, point of order, it's a 2%, not a 3%. I mean, we're talking not a lot of money, but it's a 2%.
Okay, 2%. Well, you know, I I'm not often right when I confront the chief, but this time I made it. I'll put this, we'll record this. Thank you, thank you. Okay, motions properly before the council, the motion is to approve Resolution 1102-21, is there further discussion? Hearing none, the clerk call roll.
Councilmember Page?
Yes.
Councilmember Beaumont?
Yes.
Councilmember Jorgensen?
Yes.
Thank you. Next item, Resolution 1103-21, this is providing a joint powers agreement for our prosecutorial services at the same price as last year. It's been represented to me that we're very happy with the, with the service we're getting from the Ada County Prosecutor's Office. So.
I would move to approve Resolution 1103-21, a resolution approving a joint powers agreement between Ada County, Ada County Prosecuting Attorney's Office and the City of Garden City relating to prosecution services for fiscal year 2022.
Second.
Got a motion and a second, further discussion?
Hearing none.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Can I withdraw the second on that?
Oh, yes.
I, I have a conflict with this.
Okay.
All I need to recuse.
Okay, Councilmember Beaumont, are you prepared to second the motion?
Yes, I am.
Okay, thank you. Got a motion and a second, any further discussion? Let the record reflect that Councilmember Page has a conflict and won't be voting on this. So with that, clerk call roll.
Councilmember Beaumont?
Yes.
Councilmember Jorgensen?
Yes.
And Councilmember Page?
Recused.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Next item. This, we're back to the wireless issue. If I may be so, pardon me.
We have one more resolution.
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm checking things off, I think, anticipating the end of the meeting, so my apologies. Resolution 1104-21 is the next item on the agenda, item G five, relating to surplus property, surplus, and allowing the transfer disposal of that property.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Yes.
I move that we approve Resolution 1104-21, a resolution relating to surplus property.
Thank you. Do I have a second? Got a second? Councilmember Page, further discussion? Hearing none, the clerk call roll.
Councilmember Jorgensen?
Yes.
Councilmember Page?
Yes.
Councilmember Beaumont?
Yes.
Thank you. We're now down to G six. I'm prepared to reopen the discussion on cell towers, or not. Or not. Just my two cents, we've got, we've got a lot of information tonight. I think, hopefully, we could be prepared to represent AT&amp;T and Verizon that will be taking an action one way or another on this resolution at our next meeting. You think that would work, Charlie?
It would, Mr. Mayor. If there's any guidance or instruction to staff at this point in time, be happy to hear it, that I can package it all up in the next meeting.
Mr. Mayor, I would have just a couple of talking points from our earlier
Good, no, I'm, I'm, I'm all in if we, if we can give them a direction to go so we can get this behind us.
First of all, I'd like to thank the staff for the hard work and seeking counsel from the appointed bodies. I think that was a great move to get input from other people. Speaking for myself, I am not a fan of galvanized metal. I think it looks a little bit industrial, so I prefer powder coating or painted surfaces. I really like the aesthetic of this that was provided by the storm wall. If it is mechanically possible, or if it's, if it makes for a good signal, then that's, I'd sure like to see something that looks like that. I think it's beautiful. And finally, in all of the discussion, we heard from two industry leaders and from legal counsel that it's preferable to have a standalone document on this, on this license, submaster license agreement, so that it seems that people have taken a close look at this, and for all those reasons, I think we should move in that direction.
So, any, go ahead.
I was trying to say, I also agree with Councilmember Page. I'm not a fan of the industrial galvanized metal, and I also believe that we should have a standalone design agreement, and I also I want to ensure that as elected, that we're representing our constituents' concerns also. I'm, I have a little bit of concern with the colo, since we only have two providers represented and likely more, how do we avoid a dotted line of cell towers essentially? So, I'm somewhat interested in what that solution looks like, but otherwise, I agree, we should move forward.
I have one more question of council.
Absolutely.
And I know that our, it looks like our industry leaders have left the meeting, but I, in, in general terms, Mr. Adams, when we have a motorist leave a roadway unlawfully, jump a sidewalk on Chindon, and strike a wooden power pole or a sign, you know, typically the state required limits on liability would cover that type of damage. When we're talking about a 5G micro facility or wireless facility, jumping a curb into that right away and smacking that, are we putting our, our city members in a position where the, you know, the typical liability limits aren't going to cover something that's probably a few million, million dollars? And if so, is there, is there a way we, I mean, I don't know if the agreements, the licensing agreements address that? They take from the offending party and then the industry picks up the tab, or what?
Well, Councilmember Page, these, this infrastructure is very expensive. The master license agreement template that we're coming up with that will be in front of council for approval in the near future require the industry to carry insurance themselves. So if their infrastructure, if their asset is damaged, their, their insurance should cover the difference.
Thank you.
Just for one more comment. I do not like the wooden pole and would like, if that is only used, if that's the available solution where it's existing.
Thank you. Noted. The council like, would the council like a different standard between residential or commercial, or any thoughts on how high they should be? We've heard that the industry standard's 40 feet. Would the council like to see something similar to what ACHD has in terms of distancing between them? Just random thoughts, if you don't, I mean, just to help us package this up for you.
My random thought on, on, you know, these coming into neighborhoods, which I think is inevitable.
Yep.
You know, boy, I think lower is better, even if it means more. There's just nothing that looks more out of place in a neighborhood that
Random poles.
Sticking up in the air.
Yeah. I'm thinking of my own Lakeland Village, for the record, I guess, where I live, we have these light posts that go throughout the community, and they're probably, I don't know, 20, 25 feet tall, maybe even shorter. So, just thinking of something coming in at 40 feet, you know, that's, that's double.
Yeah.
Mr. Adams, I think we need to be really flexible on this.
I'm sorry, Pam.
I, I just said, I think we need to be really flexible on this. And we need to have different sizes and different neighborhoods. We need to have some guarantees from, there's a random thought, guarantees from the vendor, that they're going to share the cost of these, if they get bounced around on Chindon or any other street.
Okay, Charlie's made a note of that as well.
Duly noted, Councilmember Beaumont.
Thank you.
I do think that the tolerance, sorry, may be recognized.
Oh, certainly.
I think that we'll tolerate, in general, in our neighborhoods, these facilities as we become more and more dependent on 5G and go from areas where we have excellent 5G service to areas like our neighborhood, and we're missing, we're dropping calls, and the internet speed is slower, suddenly those towers might be more palatable. I think it's service-driven, you know, tolerance.
I think that's the wisdom of the council to want a separate design document that can be adjusted over time as circumstances change, is it makes that a wise choice?
That's the guidance I was hoping for. Thank you, Mayor and Council.
Thank you for not letting me cut us short on that, Charlie. Okay, anything else on that? You're good to go, Mr. Adams.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I will come back in two weeks with a proposed resolution with exhibits on design standards for the council's consideration.
Okay. That concludes our regular public business tonight. We do need a short executive session to get an update on our legal issues with the Ada County Highway District, after which we will adjourn.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I move that we move, I move that we move into executive session in accordance with Idaho Code 74-2061F to communicate with legal counsel for the public agency to discuss the legal ramifications and legal options for pending litigation or controversies not yet being litigated, but imminently likely to be litigated, after which this regular city council meeting will adjourn.
Second.
Got a motion and a second, any discussion? Hearing none, clerk call roll.
Councilmember Page?
Yes.
Councilmember Beaumont?
Yeah, yes.
Councilmember Jorgensen?
Yes.
Right, Mr. Davis. Okay, with that, we will move into executive session. Councilmember Beaumont, to stay on the Zoom like you are, and